Board of Supervisors, February 18th meeting notice and agenda was posted in the Government Center Building in two places, posted on the county website on Friday, February 5th, 2021, and was published in a legal newspaper in the week of February 8th, 2021. In addition, on February 5th, 2021, at 9:05 PM, the Office of the County Clerk distributed copies of such notice to media via email and to supervisors via email or mail. The notice of amended agenda was posted in the Government Center, posted on the county website, and copies of such notice of meeting, any additional, distributed to the supervisors and media via email and mail on Friday, February 12th, 2021.
Corporation Council, is that a proper moment? Roll call?
Brad Olson.
Here.
Doug Brody.
Here.
Steve Warren Dahl.
Here.
Chris Nelson.
Here.
Tracy Lavon.
Deandra.
Here.
Michael Pritchard.
Here.
Sharon Kelly. Kim O'Connell. Amy Middleton.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Fran Dunkinson. Russ Arcand. Martha Arfice.
I'm here.
And Joe Demeling is absent. 14th president.
Representative Legius? Item 5, if there's any conflict of interest, the supervisor just to disclose that at the time of the agenda item.
I have a question. One of the public comments we received from several lobbying groups, Supervisor Olson's personal email, as well as county papers. So I was just wondering if you sent a document with the lobbyists or what that relationship was?
I get all my, all my county stuff comes on my personal panel as well. Who's on the agenda? A motion. Jay first.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
If this is appropriate in discussion, under item number 15, I would just make an amendment that we get some sort of update on why that item is on our agenda, and maybe that's from the chair of that committee, or from Brad who put it on the agenda, an executive, I don't really care, but if we could just have that noted for item number 15. Thank you.
Yeah, so when we get to item 15, I'm sure Corporation Council can answer why it's on the agenda, or the chair of the committee.
Thank you.
All right. Second, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Carrie. Matters offered for adoption on the consent agenda, number seven, we got A, B, and C. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tracy, Supervisor Olson, first and second, any discussion? None, all in favor, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, aye? Public comments, do we have public comments? Do you have public comment in the West, Bob? Do we have public comment? Hey Bob, we can't hear anything from the West. Brad, run up to the West real quick, please.
Mr. Chair, while you're waiting, I'd just like to say it really, really makes my day to see Kim O'Connell looking so good. And the rest of you guys are looking kind of funny with them long-sleeved shirts.
Go ahead. Can you hear us now?
Yes, we can.
We have two residents to give testimony during public comment.
I'm Dale Wester. The address is 901 8th Street, Centuria, Wisconsin. In my comment concerning the moratorium and the whole issue of the CAF ordinance, I believe that we should allow the ordinances, the rules that are already in place through the debt cap and EPA and DNR to allow those to work and function and not add more layers of bureaucracy to our system. It just adds cost to the cooperators and it doesn't really benefit anyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Nat?
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Brooke Wallen. I reside in township of Bowen Lake. Polk County is blessed with natural resources and it's blessed with recreational opportunities. It has four rail trails, three of which are state trails. Four rail trails in this county, that is unbelievable. Two of those rail trails are motorsport trails year-round. One of them is a motorsport trail for half the year, and then a bicycle hike trail for the other half. And one of those trails is a year-round non-motorized trail that is open for skiing and fat biking in the wintertime and pedestrian activities, as well as hiking, biking in the summertime. It's our, it is most popular trail by far. We're also blessed with 300-plus miles of snowmobile trails and over 1,000 miles of ATV trails, routes and roads, to the best of my calculations. Unfortunately, our motorsport trails are unappealing and they are unsafe. They are good for off-roading, and let's be honest, there are apparently a lot of drinking and riding, but really not much else. The Cattail State Trail is one of these motorsport trails. It is supposedly open to horses, but they don't use it. Apparently, they don't even want to use it. You supervisors who ride horses, do you ride your horses on the Cattail? You are here to fix problems and not create problems as county board supervisors. And the Stour Seven Lakes State Trail for 10 years has had no problems, zero problems since its inception. It's the most popular trail in the county, so much so that everybody wants to be on it. Why don't people want to walk, bike, ride horses, et cetera, on our local motorsport trails? Until you address that simple question and have an honest discussion about it, we're going to be stuck in a cycle of spending a lot of time, money, and resources on things that we probably shouldn't be spending time, money, and public resources on. You all got my number, give me a call if you want to talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment, Bob?
Chairman Nelson, no, that's all the public comment from the West Conference Room.
Okay, public comment ended. County Board Chair report. I guess the only thing I just, I handed out were some letters tonight, and you guys have read them, so that's, that's my report. County Administrators Report.
Chair, could I ask you what that was, being I didn't get a comment on it?
No, you can't, John. If you're not here, you don't get to know.
Oh, okay.
Well, I just thought I'd be funny, since you were funny tonight.
You're always funny, though, you got me beat.
All right, John, one of, one of the letters was from Amory Hospital, wanting to correct the record. Amory Hospital did not have a position in the Stour Trail issue. That was an employee that used the hospital's letterhead, and wanted to make sure that Amory Hospital said, "We did not take a position in the Stour Trail, the use of it." The other letter was a letter that I sent to the Non-Motorized Recreational and Transportation Trail Council. What happened here was, we had a couple individuals in the county that lobbied them a couple weeks ago to end our moratorium. We had our MOU with the DNR, and it was the president of the Tourism Council, and so I wrote a letter, basically letting that organization and the, and the council know, there'll be a copy of it when you get back. And was that it? What else was on the desk? I think that was it, from letters from us, right? Amory Hospital and that one. Yeah, so that was it.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
There's two other letters on here that I was just curious how, how we decide. One is to, they're, they're all to all of us, but they're from, well, a number of groups and names and their ag-related, which is fine, but I'm just curious how those two got on. I saw these come through on our emails as public comments versus all the rest of them. I mean, I don't know how many, if we're going to get a report on how many we got, but how did these two in particular versus none of the other ones get on our desk?
Sure, I asked for those to be, I was actually personally asked to make sure, because some supervisors don't get emails, so those two particular letters I was asked to hand about tonight. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Chairman Nelson.
Sure, what else, Mike?
A question regarding a matter that I think the Executive Committee was going to take under its wing, and that was one of an ethics code or whatever for representatives of the county to various boards and organizations. And is there going to be any report on that from the Executive Committee, or from the chair, or from anyone else? Where did that matter go?
Yeah, I, well, it went to the Executive Committee. I guess Vince or Russ can answer that.
I, I can tell you that the Executive Committee discussed it, we had some thoughts and ideas on it, and staff was directed to come back with a, a report, or recommendation, or a potential resolution on that matter. I believe Malia took that under her wing as one of her responsibilities. So that will be reported back at the next Executive Committee, and then they'll decide if that comes to the full board.
So, so we should be seeing something then, down the line?
Yes.
As long as you're watching the Executive Committee agenda, because that's where it'll be, Mike, if you want to follow that.
But it'll presumably get reported out somehow or other from the Executive Committee, or will it just get killed there?
Well, it all depends. We'll find out. You have to pay attention to the Executive Committee.
Just saying, in this realm of public feedback, I'm getting feedback about scurrilous comments and conduct by one of our representatives. You probably know his name.
No, I don't. Okay. County Administrators Report.
Thank you. I'd like to start off really acknowledging, one, that the vaccination efforts of our county are going well. They've started last few Wednesdays. I want to personally thank Tanya for the vision, her staff, as well as the many volunteers, some of whom are supervisors in this meeting. In my short tenure in government, I've never been involved yet with an effort that has received unanimous praise from our citizens. And I just want to acknowledge the great job they're doing, and encourage everybody to sign up for the vaccine. I know they're working on getting more, a bigger allotment of vaccine, but they're doing a good job. And there'll be more on that in Tanya's report. Next, the sale of the lime quarry is complete. As of today, we have $1.1 million deposited in our account, and I will say that the two employees that were working there are being reassigned to the new Parks and Trails Department, which is, I think, an exciting new department, because between that department and, and as well as the planning phase going on in Environmental Services, you're going to see some improvements in the parks and trails and further maintenance. And I think that's a very positive step forward to address one of the County Board's goals. Now, the Public Safety, Public Works, and the Environmental Services Division and personnel have been working on the Stour Trail to ensure that the master plan, which was approved here a couple of months ago, is being implemented. They have made significant progress on the rustic trail along the Stour, done a very good job. We've still got a little more work to do in terms of signage. We also have a plan and, and equipment order to groom the Augren and Kennedy Parks to make sure that they are ready for cross-country skiing. And, you know, our goal is to have it open this season still, but that depends on when the materials and the weather and those types of things. But we do have signs coming in, we'll get those signs up in the next short period and we'll open. There is, just so you know, I think most of you may know, but there has been a lawsuit filed by the Friends of the Stour and the couple of individuals that are asking that a judge to block that trail being opened to snowmobiles and horses. We have our legal team, as well as an outside legal team, addressing it. We feel good about our response to those claims. Finally, just in case you're watching, the governor released his proposed state budget, I believe it's Tuesday evening, very early in the phase, and obviously the legislature will respond to that, but we will be reviewing it and assessing its impact. And Chad, I know we'll have reports here in the next committee meetings, and we'll fill you in here at the board as well.
I got my second vaccine Saturday, Vince.
That's great. In Arizona.
Yep. Took my sister and got her done.
All right, we're on confirmation of appointments, 11. Appointments by the chair. Joe Demeling requested because of the fact that it has to be virtual. He just is not able to attend the Wisconsin West Central Regional Planning Commission meetings any longer, and I discussed it with him and discussed it with the executive, and Supervisor Warren Dahl accepted that position. So, do I need a motion? So I need a motion to approve Supervisor Warren Dahl. Motion by Arcand, second by Luke. Any questions? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Item B is county administrator appointments?
Yeah, the only appointment for confirmation from the board is the admission of the FSA Representative Justin Wood to the Environmental Services Committee. He's been attending the last several meetings, and seems to be very well adjusted to that already.
Need a motion for that? Yes. Second, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Could we get a thumbnail biography of Justin Wood?
A background, he's, well, he was appointed by the FSA. He is a son of Dale Wood, isn't he? You know, if that's relevant or not, but he knows the county well. He's a farmer in the southern half of the county, been farming for quite a while. He also does some work with Land O'Leary, I guess, is maybe his primary career, but he has.
He's either on the Fair Board or attends all the Fair Board meetings.
Good. All right, we had a first and a second, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. COVID update, Tanya?
First of all, though, I would like to introduce our new health officer. This is Jean Schultz. She started last week on Monday, and we have been getting her acclimated to Polk County and all of the public health programs and vaccination clinics and all that, so I just wanted to introduce her to you guys all and let you know that she's very glad to be here and we're very happy to see her. Jean came from the City of Milwaukee Health Departments, so she does have a lot of health department experience that she brings with her, so it's just with a little different flair with the rural setting, rather than being in a metropolitan area.
Glad to have you here, Jean.
Thank you. Okay. All right.
Is she going to run the meeting tonight?
I'm still going to leave that up to Tanya. So just a couple of things before I get into this new dashboard that the state has put out for vaccine. You may see that quarantine guidance has changed for individuals who have received the series, the vaccine series, and are two weeks beyond their vaccine. If you have any questions, you can call our health department. There's a lot of different nuances in there, so rather than telling you, we'll just, if you have questions, give us a call. And our numbers are continuing to decrease in Polk County for positivity rates. When I checked the state's website, we are still considered a very high area, but we're not showing any increase in our cases. We're remaining steady, so we're looking for that number to start going down, and hopefully soon it will start going down. So that's good news. As, good news because we, it gives us time to focus on the vaccines. And like Vince said, we've created somewhat of an organic vaccination clinic here through our work with Mole over at the Highway Shop. It's a complete drive-through clinic, so we realized that in the middle of winter, and especially with this really cold weather that we've had, very difficult for our older population who is currently eligible to move into a building and have a waiting period to get the vaccine and then have to get back out of the building. So realizing that that was a barrier for them. We looked at our testing site that was drive-through and turned that into the vaccination clinic. And as Vince said, it has just been super successful. We're volunteers and the medical community and the community at large are coming in to help us get all of these people vaccinated. Our only barrier right now is the limited vaccine supply from the state. So earlier this week on a call, we were notified that there were requests for 300,000 doses across the state, and at this time, the CDC has only allotted about 70,000 to give out. So that kind of gives you an idea of the, kind of the predicament that we're in, where we can, we think that we can, or we know that we can have a throughput of 1,000 vaccines a day or more in that drive-through clinic, but vaccine is so limited, we're just not getting that. So if you see your, your numbers on Facebook or whatever that we're putting out of a 200 mark or a 300 mark, that's all the vaccine that we've received. We don't sit on any vaccine, we don't waste any vaccine. We have such a demand in this county and our Burnett County partners that we will be vaccinating our older populations for quite a while yet, if we continue to receive those lower doses. So the demographic in our two counties is about 14,000 people. We're about a third of the way through. So before we move on to another group, we've got about another 9,000 people to vaccinate. And I, and we're pretty sure that most of them do want the vaccine. They've been, they've been isolated for a long time, and they get the vaccine and they want the vaccine, so it's just been really positive. We're thankful for all of the support from everybody, board members who are volunteering and just making it work. Thank you for that. So the, if you want the information, this is the, through the state, we'll get a link on our website. We were working on getting it posted up today, but we didn't quite get it. This will give you statewide data of the vaccines administered. So check it, if you scroll around, it's the whole state, all of the counties. You can click on a county, if you want to go back to Polk, and that will give you the demographics for our county specifically. So when I talk about our 65-plus group, it shows that we're about 40%. So yesterday, we had vaccine clinics, so all of our numbers are added up today. So we're making a little bit of headway, but we want to see a 70 or 80% number, maybe 75% of that population vaccinated before we move on to the next. If you click on Burnett County right above there, because we have partnered with them to share our resources, they are, they're at about 28%. We have a little ways to go yet before we move to the next group, but if we could get the vaccine, we would be smooth sailing. So if you, we'll get you guys pointing to that direction if you want to know vaccine data. I think it's pretty good. And then if you don't click on a county, it will tell you the entire state. Any questions?
Tanya, Mr. Chair? So, this is Amy, and I have, I do want to echo how awesome these clinics have been. The staff has done a phenomenal job. Our, our volunteer vaccinators are like our heroes, and then the rest of us kind of see around them, but it's just been so impressive. I have a question about the variants. Do we, I know that the sequencing of these variants is sort of not widely available, but do we have Wisconsin Department of Health helping us track variants in our county or at all? Is there any sequencing going on in Polk County to tell us if we have the UK variant or the South African variant, et cetera?
Yes, the state is tracking that, so that's the different, the different courses of the COVID that are coming out that are more, way more contagious. And I don't believe that we've had it in our county yet. We would be notified if it was, and we have not received that notification. I know that it's as far as Eau Claire County with cases being reported, but I haven't seen it here yet.
Okay, thank you.
If people have signed up and they, and, you know, they're 75 or whatever, and haven't heard anything, and, because I've had people ask me, just tell them to wait, just hold tight. So, back when we first became a vaccinator site, we had a form on our website for people of interest. Within five days, we had over 6,600 people wanting vaccine. We had to close it down because it was just unmanageable. We're working our way through that list, and we're just on the tail end of that list. So we are planning our marketing for getting people to the self-assign on our website. So probably next week, maybe even this week, we would have the availability for the public to sign up if they determine that they are eligible themselves. So we are almost done with that list. If, if you were on the list and you haven't been called, we're going to invite people to go ahead and get signed up because we work through as much as we can. The 75-plus groups, the hospitals and clinics in the area really wanted to do those patient of records. So, if you go to Sinclair Regional and you are 75-plus, they wanted to reach out to those populations to be able to offer them vaccine through their clinic. So, the, the health departments have only been focusing on 65 to 74. So, that's been our, if we get a straggler 75-plus in there, we, we grab them because we want them to get vaccinated. So, that's just the agreement that we have with our partners.
Okay, thank you.
What about the immune deficient at any age? And will they be?
Yeah, that's, so in the next group of eligible people, there's some caveats to help get people with underlying health conditions vaccinated. However, it's not like for a general public. So, it's only if they're on a waiver type of programs through the state that they can get it. So, I think there's advocacy and strong advocacy on my part to open that up for people who are not on publicly funded programs that if you have an underlying condition, you should be included in that group. So, you know, that, that group moves around a lot, that eligibility, and the state is making those determinations. It's not our call to make, but they're not quite in that group yet. Educators and childcare are the next few coming up eligible. But we have to work through the 65-plus first.
Bucket of water?
Yeah, too. So, it's for community-based clinic, which is nice.
Do you think you'll, when, what's your goal for hit that 75%? What do you, you have a goal or a judgment when you think you might be able to get there?
Only once we get to the 75%.
Yeah, that's what your goal was, to get 75% of that group vaccinated. How long will that take?
Well, it all depends on vaccine supply, which is the, you know, if I had a crystal ball, I would look in it.
Does the state give you any information on when you'd be there?
They, their last message to us was that they are able to make some small incremental increases, but they, they just don't have a lot of optimism on a big load of vaccine that will be released from CDC or the manufacturers at any, anytime soon. Oh, well, what can you do? All right, well, I'll tell them what you said. Thank you.
Sounds good.
I think I'm gonna go in tomorrow morning to have my.
Hey, John?
I'm here.
Might want to have your wife take her comments outside. That's her in the background. We can hear her conversation.
Oh, okay.
Or your girlfriend.
Kelly.
We're both.
Hear that.
At least our county boards are entertaining, right? All right, so that was, that was the end of 12. That was our COVID update. So, now we're ready to go on to committee of the whole. Can I have a motion for that? We need a motion on committee of the whole.
I'll make a motion on committee of the whole.
You got a second, Arcan? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You can go directly. So, we thought that this brief talk today would be about how we go about amendments. And this would be true for an amendment to a motion or an amendment to a resolution. Anytime you want to make an amendment to something that is actively on the floor, you have to wait until the person that is currently talking, can't interrupt them. In other words, it isn't a motion that has priority that stops all debate. But when there is a lull in the conversation about a resolution or a motion, you can move to amend. And there can be multiple amendments that happen, but only one amendment can be considered at any given time. Just like a regular motion, you need a second. Somebody needs to second your request to amend. It is a debatable motion. So, you can, once you have the first and the second, talk about whether or not you want to vote for the amendment, and that's true for a resolution or a motion. But during that time, it's not the time to talk about the underlying issue. So, just the debate about whether the amendment should happen. Like I said before, it can be, an underlying motion or a resolution could be amended more than once, but only one amendment can be considered at any one time. Only a majority vote for an amendment. In other words, you don't have to have a two-thirds majority, even if the underlying issue would require a two-thirds majority. So, for example, if you had a resolution that was amending the 2021 budget, so that resolution would require a two-thirds vote, and somebody, while you're debating that resolution, wants to insert an amendment to that resolution, you vote on the amendment would still only require a simple majority. You can ask for someone to reconsider an amendment if maybe somebody misunderstood something when they made the motion to amend, but it would have to be somebody who voted in the affirmative or who voted on the winning side of the amendment debate. So, obviously, there's a lot of different ways to amend something. You can insert and add additional information. You can cross out, strike out information. You can do both, or you can take out a whole clause and substitute a better clause. One of the things you don't, and I don't know if it's on this slide or not, if there's a Scrivener's error, like we spelt a word incorrectly or there's a small typo, those don't require amendments to fix. They just need to be pointed out, and the clerk's office or my office will go ahead and fix that on, on the original that will end up becoming a part of the record. So, those little minor Scrivener's errors, they don't require amendments. Just point it out to us and we'll make sure we fix that. When you're talking about an amendment to a resolution or a motion, it has to be germane to what you're talking about. So, if you had a resolution to amend the 2020 budget to add funding for some type of a study, and then somebody else wanted to amend the resolution to include, you know, to honor some retiree that had absolutely nothing to do with the purpose of the resolution, that's an improper amendment. I think everybody understands that. Also, it would violate the open meetings law if it wasn't noticed. So, it has to have something to do with what the underlying resolution or motion is. And also, you can't add something to a resolution or motion as an amendment that would completely change the intent. So, but like inserting the word "not" to make it, the resolution now is the opposite of what it was intended for. You can't do that. You can't do something that is so contrary to the original intent. We can go to the next slide and I'll, I'll carry on a little bit about this. As I said before, Scrivener's errors, you don't need amendment. Simple amendment, you know, you want to change it from $15,000 to $20,000. You can make those verbally on the floor, but again, you can't, you can't use the amendment to completely change the meaning of the resolution. So, if you had $20,000 for a study on some particular topic in a resolution, you, I want to amend that to be zero. So, then you're really saying that the resolution now no longer has any meaning. So, either by inserting the word "not," doing something completely contrary, you can certainly change the substance of a resolution, you know, moving it here and there, but changing it so fundamentally that it no longer has any part of the original intent, that's likely out of order. Most amendments that are simple can be made on the floor verbally. I would highly recommend that if you had a complex amendment, changing several different things, you could either individually make each simple amendment. I want to change this phrase in paragraph one, and then I want, then everybody debates that, and you go to the next one. But if you have something where you're striking out or adding quite a bit to a resolution, feel free to email that to me with enough heads up that I have time to look at it, hopefully not like the day of or the day before, but you don't have to, of course. But I'm, I'm willing to help give advice on, on how to craft something, especially if I know what the person's hope or intent is with proposed amendment. I can, I can help craft that. And then we won't have to take, you know, recess so that we can look through and have everyone understand what the amendment is, except I guess you guys would. But if I have a look at it ahead of time, I can make suggestions as to what may or may not be appropriate or in order. Again, you don't have to, but I'm, I'm open to that. So, please feel free to reach out in those circumstances. And that's all I had. You guys have any questions on that?
Thanks, Malia. You have a motion to adjourn committee of the whole? Or is there any other comments? Hey, we got a first and a second. All in favor by saying aye.
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 Carry. We're on number 14. I don't need to make that. We're on number 15, and earlier Supervisor Middleton asked for there to be intended as, what a discussion on how it got, where I would think, if you malia then?
Sure, I mean, I can unless Russ, the chair, wants to talk about it. This matter was on the executive committee agenda. It's a topic that covers multiple different committees and divisions, and there's been quite a bit of work that has been put in from staff, from environmental services and from public health, and from my office and Department of Administration. And we've kind of felt, as staff anyway, that there was no real clear path forward to complete some of the work that we had been working on. And so, we were requesting advice, I guess, and the committee, the executive committee, said, well, why don't we see, put this on the full board's agenda so that we can get some consensus and direction from the full board on, on where we go from here. And I believe that's how it got placed on the agenda, unless anybody wants to add, Russ or or Vince?
All got here. All got here. Does that, did that answer your question, Supervisor Middleton?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so.
We still have a discussion?
Yeah, I think so.
Now, we are, now we're in discussion. Supervisor Olson from Environmental Services is supposed to this. Executive, why don't you, you want to start it off, Brad?
I can. I guess I'll, I'll start off with a motion. If it gets a second, we can discuss the motion.
Point of order. This isn't an action item on the agenda, it's discussion only. Let's hear what his motion is. If it's not taking formal action, approving an ordinance, approving a resolution, I mean, is it, it could be a motion to lay on the table. It could be a motion, I, I don't know what his motion is, so I cannot rule on that.
Yeah, I can't, okay. What is your motion, Supervisor Olson?
I make a motion, the board find that no more county resources should be expended to further, to further work on the operational ordinance because there is no clear, no clear practical path forward at this time.
So, is that motion? Are you gonna make another?
You want to see it?
Malia? Do you want a copy of it?
I, I call point of order to see if it's proper.
I call point of order for the opinion of Corporation Council.
So, I, does that sound as if there's any formal action approving of a motion or, excuse me, a resolution or an ordinance? You're simply asking that the county board find that there's, the staff should not continue working on it, more or less?
Hey, do we have a second on that? And then we can have discussion.
Hold on a second.
Second by Rock. So, now there can be discussion about this topic or actually probably about the motion. So, Supervisor Olson, you want to?
Yeah. So, we, we sent a resolution, an operational ordinance to DAPCAP back in August, September, whatever the timeframe was. They heard back from them on the 15th of October with a long laundry list of things that were, that were wrong with that ordinance. Specifically, the fact that if we're gonna have an operational ordinance on a specific species, in this instance, swine, we're gonna have to prove scientifically defensively prove that swine waste is different than any other animal waste. Do that dairy waste, beef waste, poultry waste, whatever that is. That's gonna take a lot of time. That's gonna take a lot of county resources. And even if that proves how you're right, that's just the beginning of what the county is gonna have to spend on scientific studies because DAPCAP has told us that we don't get to go to Iowa, North Carolina, or Germany, or Argentina to find studies. The studies have to be local to our area. So, that means we're gonna spend more county resources, more time, and vast amounts of dollars hiring research firms to tell us what some want to find out, some don't want to find out with no known outcome of, of what could possibly happen. January 6th, Environmental Services heard from Corporation Council, Assistant Corporation Council, LoSo, that the county has, likely does not have statutory authority to impose bonding on agriculture issues like this. Operational ordinances are based heavily on the use of, of, I'll get it, I lost it. Nuisance ordinances, be they private or public nuisance, that's what organizational ordinances are based on. Wisconsin Statute 82308 virtually exempts agriculture practices from nuisance ordinances. And not only does it, is, is it almost exempt from a nuisance ordinance, if you take an agriculture entity to court and you lose as the defendant, if that's Polk County, if that's a private individual, it is not, the fact that you may pay the defendant's costs, you shall pay the defendant's cost. Realistically, that is why you don't see agriculture in court all the time, no matter the size of it, because it's, it's a, it's a legal business in the state of Wisconsin. If we're gonna move forward, we need to be willing to spend a pile of time, and more importantly, a pile of money on the 2021 budget. Because I believe we're, we're changing the staff as, staff can't do what we need, what the state says that we need to do anymore. And I think, I think this county needs to follow the lead of our, of our neighbor to the north just this morning and, and put an end to this. This is Burnett County voted this morning to pretty much put an end, the end of their moratorium. Where their discussion goes, I'm not sure. I just think we're at the point where it's, it, it's a state issue. Earlier tonight, we passed something that has to go to the PSC in the, in the, in the solar farm. It's all state-funded or it's all state-run. The county has no say. Agriculture is the most heavily regulated industry in the state of Wisconsin, and I'm not really sure what at a county level, we think we're gonna do that can get more restrictive than the state and, and stand up and work. We're gonna spend, I believe, hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe millions of dollars over the course of years to maybe prove that, hey, we can't regulate agriculture any harder than we are. Then, at the end of the day, it is agriculture that feeds every one of us. I realize a lot of, or a, a few people in this county would like to see agriculture gone, but I didn't see any of those people out helping to keep the spreader off at 25 but I didn't see any of those people out helping to keep the spreader off at 2530 below last week. And I also don't see them people farming. If you want small farms like mine to expand and stay viable in the state of Wisconsin, all of those who want that, who don't want large agriculture, there's an unlimited amount of farms sitting out there empty that you can go buy, rent. It is, it is time to put up or shut up. If you want small agriculture, become small agriculture. I love small agriculture. It's all I've ever been. I'm never going to be any bigger than I, than I am today, which is the same size my family was 75 or 100 years ago. But that isn't what feeds America today. And if that's what you want to feed America, then you've got to step up to the plate and you have to become me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any other questions about?
Yes, to you, Mr. Chair.
Yes Supervisor Rowdy?
I have more discussion.
Go ahead.
Okay. Part of this is for supervisors that did not attend the executive meeting last Thursday. It's also a prelude to my call to Wisconsin Counties Association. And these paragraphs are discussion items I had with the Wisconsin Counties Association. And the first is from Polk County Rules of Order Ordinance. The fundamental purpose of the executive committee shall be advisory to special needs situations, special needs situations. When conflict exists between committees, the executive committee shall mediate and recommend solutions prior to the matter being referred to the county board. Well, now this other, it refers to line 15. Now, an unprecedented move by the executive committee to complete other committees' agendas. There is no conflict between any committees on this issue. So they're saying it is a conflict, so the executive needs to deal with. Also, the executive stated staff time and length of time worked. Well, we discussed what about the Star Trail? We worked on that for years. Tourist rooming houses, we worked on that for eight months. We have a resolution created on CAFOs from September to have the Health and Human Services work on the issue, and that's been going on for six months, which doesn't compare to the others. So the Counties Association response was, we need to clarify, we need to clarify our rules of order. And especially, she said, the sentence, when conflict exists between committees, that needs to be clarified. She couldn't understand exactly what that sentence meant in the first place and then taking it off into a different direction so that it can easily be looked at. The other thing that remains to be looked at is our policy, because in the rules of order, there's nothing about removing a resolution from a committee. And other counties have that, but it's in their rules of order. So she, her recommendation was, we needed to sit down and look at our rules of order and bringing them technically up to date or more understanding. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Supervisor Arcan?
Can you turn him down a little bit? He actually hurts my ears. I, I got part of it, but not all of it. And if, if the issue is that the executive committee is doing something here, they're not, except to bring this issue to the entire county board. And I don't, I mean, Brad is the chair or the vice chair of a committee. So this isn't coming from the executive committee. It was sent here by executive so the entire county board could discuss it and make a decision on how, how much further are we going to go with this?
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I've got a couple things in here. Go ahead, Mike.
Going back, I went back to reread our September resolution and 3720. And one paragraph reads that now be it further resolved that the Environmental Services Committee be directed to continue to work to refine the amended Polk County Comprehensive Use Ordinance enacted hereby as it pertains to swine CAFOs. And the Health and Human Services Board is directed to continue its work on an operational CAFO ordinance, each for future consideration by the Polk County Board of Supervisors. That was five months ago, and both committees have been addressing those matters. I don't think that, I want to just back up and say, when I voted, voted for Resolution 3720, I viewed it as a compromise that this work had been done, the moratorium was expiring, and I think we were revised legally, we probably could not or should not extend it. I don't recall the specifics of that. And that it was better to have something in place than nothing, but that there was work underway that was being done in a diligent and professional way, both by the Health and Human Services Board and by the Environmental Services Committee. At this point, I am totally opposed to discontinuing that work. I think there should probably be some definition of what is going to be done, what type of framework and what more work is expected to occur and probably reports by the committees, perhaps at our next board meeting as to where they stand on these issues at this point in time. This is a very important issue for our county. We've had probably more feedback or as much feedback on this issue as we have on any while I've been on the board, maybe with the exception of the stellar Seven Lakes Trail. And I think we, we've got our million one that we wanted used to make a new rusty trail, but I wouldn't mind spending some of that money if we have to, and I don't know that we do it all, but the complete work that is important for the long term of the county in terms of its agriculture and its environment and its quality of water and its quality of life. And so I would be, and I think having a resolution that's not on the agenda from Supervisor Olson, I, I didn't follow all the prior discussion, but I, it's hard for me to conceive that that would be an appropriate resolution for us to take tonight. Thank you.
We had another question down here first Supervisor Middleton.
Jamie can go first if she wants to.
No, I'm fine.
I just have some comments. At the time when the CUP was voted on, a lot of people in this room had a lot of comments that we could still do an operations ordinance and we could still examine that process. And now it's almost like I'm hearing, well, it's too hard. We can't do it. Well, you know, how much money, when it comes to the price tag on something? The county has paid a lot of money in legal fees and staff time, and the county's getting sued right now about the Star Trail. But apparently, I don't hear a lot of concern from other supervisors about how much money that's costing for 17 miles and that issue. There doesn't seem to be a lot of concern about what that has cost the county in time and money and how many years it's been going on, how many tens and tens and tens of thousands of dollars. So it's interesting to me that we're concerned about spending money on a CAFO ordinance, but we're not concerned about all the tens and tens of thousands of dollars that have spent, that's spent on 17 miles of trail that debatedly, you know, up for debate, could be considered really kind of a special interest type of thing. And this is a countywide issue that potentially could affect a lot of people in a lot of towns in the county. You know, some of you have made comments to me that I'm not a farmer or I don't know anything about farming, which means you really don't know me very well at all, because I grew up on an award-winning farm, and I have relatives in Polk County that are award-winning farmers. So I am pro agriculture. I'm pro farming. But this is corporate greed. I don't think it's our job to make sure big corporations make as much money as possible. I do think it's our job to protect the health and safety and welfare of the citizens who live here. You know, I understand that there's DNR regulation. I understand they're a business. They have a right to exist. They have a right to come here as long as they meet all of our rules. But the DNR staff, from what I've heard from them, when they give presentations to Health and Human Services, is that they have one person who monitors one aspect of CAFO permitting for the entire state of Wisconsin. They have two other people that monitor the rest of CAFO permitting in the entire state of Wisconsin. And if we could trust everyone to go by the rules and be a good operator, you know, there wouldn't be an issue. But unfortunately, you know, given things that have happened in our area, county just to the south of us, you can't trust and depend that that's what they're going to do. You know, it is, it seems to be, you know, more about making money, you know, than anything else. You know, we have a great staff here. I understand they have a lot of work to do, and they've been working on this a long time. I understand that department is getting an additional staff member that will hopefully somewhat lessen their load a little bit. But frankly, I don't think it's up to the staff to decide how we move forward this with this or if we move forward with this. If this is beyond what they can handle, then perhaps we would need to look at hiring a consultant to do it. Since I've been here, I've seen things that nobody has done anything about for a long time. One of them is.
Okay, so Fran, I'm not going to let you go off. You're addressing the amendment, not about staff not doing their job. So I'll take your comments next. Amy Middleton?
Yeah, thank you. So I, I just kind of want to echo some of the stuff. We've heard that, as we know, in September, we voted to move forward on this, and we have talked about amending up on some of this stuff and this and that. And so I echo that. We, in Health and Human, are continuing to look at this operation ordinance, kind of lay some groundwork in looking at background information and research that we need. Environmental Services, you know, still has the citing ordinance in their committee. I would say that under the citing ordinance for both operation and citing, we need to have reasonable and scientifically defensible findings of fact, and the citing ordinance right now does not have that. So it cannot stand up to any, I mean, we're kind of on legal thin ice for that. So if we want to make sure we don't get sued, having findings of fact in the CUP is, is very important, and then that just fits into adding that to an operation ordinance. And I really do think that establishing these findings of fact is not a huge job. We have swine-related research out there on what its impacts are for health and water and air, specific to swine. We can find that information. We have it. We, we have some of this in our own moratorium study. We even have stuff that Eureka did and Trade Lake. Those little towns have done the bulk of work, and we can just, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel with them. So, you know, the Health Committee has been steadily working on this, and instead of, you know, letting this go, we've sort of, I feel like this is again an overreach to kind of kill the research process on, on this CAFO stuff. And again, the executive committee is to handle conflicts in this situation, and as Doug mentioned, there is no conflict. So there is no conflict between health and environment. And as we said in September, work should move forward, and work has moved forward. And now there's this attempt to make it stop, and I can only, you know, I don't know why. You know, is it, is it because we don't want to have scientific, reasonable findings so it doesn't hold up to a, us, a legal lens or, or what? So it's this, again, I echo that this is an important issue for Polk County. There's people, we had, you know, 150 people commented in the middle of the pandemic in July, 100 came out in January when it's freezing cold. We get comments on our emails all the time. I think we should be allowed to let this go, and we should honor our, our request and resolution that we did in September and finish our work. As to some of this Dadcap and local stuff, the Dadcap letter really, the way I look at it is, it's a roadmap for us to use in getting our work done, and they will work with us. And so I feel like the local piece, the local studies piece, again, that's really not that we have to build a CAFO, pollute the groundwater, and then test it to be able to show that, yep, there's groundwater contamination. It's really about, we can have specific star area depths of groundwater, tributary soils, clays, et cetera, et cetera, and then show how a swine-specific impact would affect our local area. That's the definition of local. And then as far as the bonding and fees piece, Andy Phillips from the Wisconsin Counties Association actually clarified this for us last, I don't know, fall-ish, where he, he talked about that, you know, it is sort of that double negative, but there is no, they can't say that bonding is illegal. So until that's changed in the legislature and it's ratified, there is a way to do it. So I really urge us to continue this work, finish it up, have a, have a there there to deliver to the board that comes out of Health and Human and, and the whatever CUP additions for the findings of fact out of environment so that we can actually vote on something of substance and, and complete this package as opposed to just stopping it right now. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I make comments?
Go ahead, John.
Excuse me. As Representative from Polk County on the Wisconsin Counties Social and Spirit Committee, I stated before, we brought this up several times, and in southeastern Wisconsin around Dane County and some Deagran Counties in there, they have these operating CAFOs with strictly large hog operations. And the, Brad was right, the Wisconsin Legislature and the University Studies and Wisconsin Counties Association, they have really looked into some guidelines and tried to be helpful in these situations. Mr. Jackson from, that allows all the permits for large farm, well, actually all the farms, every farmer in, in the, that is, has a farm operation, has a guideline, is under restrictions. And we have four Wisconsin counties meetings in March, and I have them posted, and the agenda's posted with Lisa, our county clerk. One is the 5th of March, another is 11th of March, and there's two more after that. And I will be on the web on those. And also, they will be with the clerk up there in, in her office, and people can come in and, and listen. I think I'll be the only one that'll be able to make live comments, but that's what's coming up, so I wanted to get you included in on that. Thank you.
Supervisor Kelly?
Well, I, I'm kind of going back to when the moratorium was ending, this last moratorium. And I asked the question then, how do we know when this is done? Because it's been since we got the response from Dadcap, when, October, you said? October 15th? What's changed since October? I haven't seen anything that's changed in the CUP or, I mean, ongoing work. I'm on the Health and Human Services and Environmental Services. I haven't seen anything that has changed since October. So, and I, and I remember Doc saying, we just need a little more time. And now I'm hearing that again tonight. What's a little more time mean? You know, what, how, how much effort do we put into this before we say we're done? I, I don't know. I don't. I, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. Because, you know, what's the next step?
Okay, Supervisor Olson, since you made the motion, you've heard a lot about your comments and your motion. I'd like you to address them. But I'd also like, since staff is here, we have Bob and Vince. Emily, I would like to have a staff chime in on what have we done? You know, answer some of these questions too. But go ahead Supervisor Olson, you can, a couple, couple of things and I'll, and what will hopefully be a high note.
Supervisor Middleton has spoken over and over again of this operational ordinance is to protect the unzoned towns in Polk County. That's what we need this for. I live in an unzoned town, I sit on the board in an unzoned town in Clam Falls. We don't need Supervisor Middleton's help, we don't need Polk County's help in this point. I can speak for the Clam Falls Board, I can believe I can speak for the Lorraine Town Board in saying the same thing, is nobody came to us, Supervisor Middleton, nobody on this board, nobody in the county came to us and said, do you need our help with an operational ordinance? And yet, that seems to be the push, we need to protect the unzoned towns. We're just fine on our own. The other thing is, I wish yesterday, everybody could have been at Environmental Services. We had the Horse Creek Farmer-led watershed here. Gave a approximately a 45-minute presentation on what they're doing in the, in the Horse Creek watershed down on Cedar Lake. Was even for somebody who farms, pretty amazing what they've done. Probably the biggest thing that came out of it was that, that group started roughly 10, 12, 13 years ago, something like that, on their own. Not because, not because the county said you have to, not because the state said you have to. But the farmers said, we want to do this. Without that, without that farmer-led watershed, the citizens on Cedar Lake would have not have been able to get funding to do their alum treatment on the water, or just, maybe I pronounced that wrong, but, but to treat the water. Because with that farmer-led watershed group, they were able to prove they were putting less fertilizer, less contaminants of whatever they were into the Cedar Lake, which allowed Cedar Lake to be approved for that process. And we as a county can keep going down this path of being antagonistic towards agriculture. And it will lead us nowhere other than a big nasty fight. Or we can, as a county, try to come together with agriculture, have more farmer-led watershed groups, more watershed groups, and, and be friends instead of antagonistic. And, and get to somewhere where we all want to be, where we all want to be. But the road certain supervisors have us going down here will lead to nothing but, but bitter failings and hard fights and fights for years and years to come.
All right. Who wants to? I'd like you to explain where we at and address some of these questions, some of the supervisors.
Yeah, I'll just kind of clarify some things that were stated. After the resolution that was passed, Mr. Pritchard mentioned, in which we were asked to continue working on an operational ordinance and to have something that, that we could present to the board or whatever the exact words were. From that point, we put together the ordinance that was based off of what we said was kind of the model, which was the Bayfield and Eureka. And we kind of put together a reasonable, getting something started. Sent that to DADCAP to see what type of reaction, issues, hurdles, and so on that there would be. Not only did they send us a reply, but they asked for a conference call with our staff to discuss it, in which they wanted to explain everything. And we listened to that, we took notes, we took the letter and took those notes. And then we met as staff, so Health and Human Services, Environmental Services, the Legal Division, and myself, and said, okay, what do we have to do to have a operational ordinance? And it wasn't a matter of, is it going to be a lot of work? The issue was, how much resource will it take to do? Do we have the capability to do it? And if we don't, can we hire somebody else to do it? And that's how we approached it. But when we studied it, we kept coming back to the same thing. And that is, we cannot come up with a path forward. We don't see our ability to do local studies, as they are suggesting, but ones that would take years and years and years. We could get an outside consultant to come in and do some of this work. But as we learned last time, you have the, here's our report. And then one side of the argument says, no, 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 you need to change it this way. And then the other side says, no, 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 we got to add this then. And it continued, as you recall, last time for many, many months. The other thing I'll say is, the legal aspect. And part of my job is to say, what's it going to take to make this happen? And there are some legal issues. We mentioned Joe Lozo in his presentation on the surety bond. But the biggie is the swine. You combine all the facts, the letters, the phone conversation that I had with the DADCAP, which in essence, they were saying, we want to make sure you understand. This is a hard way to go. And they didn't use those words, but basically saying, it's going to fail. You're going to get challenged, and here's where you got to watch out. And we looked at all those things and said, we didn't say it's not hard. We said, can we take something to the board that will work? And that's where we've been spinning. So we've had many meetings in Health and Human Services where we bring in Environmental Services staff to present information. And, and we've talked about it. So that's where we are.
Does anyone have any questions that would require clarification from either Bob or Malia on this issue with this, this motion? Go ahead Supervisor Warren, you haven't asked me yet.
Eureka wrote the operational ordinance.
Who wrote it?
Eureka?
Yep.
And did they get the same kind of feedback? Does anybody know? I mean, is it like worth nothing if they get, so somebody come in, you know? The reason I ask it is, I mean, I got Lake Town Sterling that are on going. And unlike you, they're asking me. They say that the operational ordinance would help. So where I am between the farmer and the townspeople. Oh, I, I, I get it. And, and, and here's the thing that Polk County done different than any other municipality in the state of Wisconsin that's passed an operational ordinance, either Bayfield County that was talked about so heavily for years, Trade Lake, or Eureka, which is supposedly the, the gold standard of operational ordinances. We sent it to the state for approval.
Supervisor Olson, would you clarify? We, we-
No one else to, to, to regulate the agriculture industry through an operational ordinance or anything else harder than the state says? The state says, here's the rules. One, two, three, here's the rules.
Right, I'm not interrupting you, man. You said we sent theirs to, we didn't send theirs.
We sent ours.
But we took theirs.
We took theirs, we copied and pasted Eureka.
And changed the name.
Took out the town of Eureka, placed it with Polk County.
And made it swine-specific.
And made it swine-specific. But what no one else in the state has done, once you go beyond state regulations, DADCAP and the DNR have to approve those regulations that are over and above state mandated regulations. And that's where the problem comes in. Fran is absolutely right. We can pass an operational ordinance, as long as the operational ordinance is in line with DADCAP and DNR rules. So then really, what we would be doing is creating an ordinance that is already in place at the state level. Because we can't be more restrictive than the state. So in, in, in the Clam Falls legal opinion, it, it isn't worth the paper that it's written on because there is so many things wrong with it. And there's so many things wrong with it, even if you don't make it swine-specific. Anytime you go beyond swine standards, you have to scientifically, defensively prove it. And, and that's the problem. And then who's to say, who's to say that after we think it's scientifically proved, that the state is going to? That's, that's the issue. Why is Bayfield not, is, does it still stand? It's never been challenged. Why does Eureka still stand? Why does Bayfield still stand? It's never going to be challenged. Well, never say never, because it could be. But it's very easy to say, well, it's law, it's never been challenged, you know? I, I can't take it, so somebody farms in, in Eureka or Trade Lake, they can't take that town to court until they're affected. So somebody milking 40 cows in, in the town of Eureka, can't sue Eureka. They have to be an affected party, which would mean a CAFO. So it's absolutely legal until that CAFO comes in. And then you're going to court. And if, if and when you lose in court, you're going to pay the bill. The taxpayers are going to pay the bill. Malia can correct me here if I'm horribly wrong. But the county's insurance, if we pass this and get sued, if we pass the Eureka, or our ordinance here and were to get sued down the road for $1 or millions of dollars and lose, we're all footing that bill. The insurance company isn't footing the bill for us. The taxpayers are footing that bill.
I think you've answered Supervisor Warren's question. Bob, could you share, because one of the public comments and what I keep hearing is, you know, we don't have, the county, what does the county have in place? We're rolling out the red carpet for swine CAFO. Can you speak to the public and to us? Exactly what have we done? And, and I'd also like for you to explain for these unzoned townships that I've heard talked about tonight, how do they get protection under county zoning? Can you just walk us through those two issues quickly and take any other questions?
Sure. Well, I'll take your second one. Can you hear me all?
Yeah.
Um, I'll take the second question first. For an unzoned town to become or fall under county zoning authority, it's a really simple process. The town simply has to pass an enabling resolution. It can happen over a meeting or two with their land commission. They have one. The only thing we ask is for an official map or a district map. And then what we do on our part is we amend our ordinance to include that town and that, their official map to be included in our official district map. It's a fairly simple process. So with that comes extra protections, extra regulation. But you have that layer of county zoning authority helping and assisting and affirming land use decisions from the town.
It doesn't sound that bad, Olson. The other four can get in if they want.
So what have we done so far? Well, I believe it was last summer. Cannot cite the actual resolution. But there was language in, whether it was the extension of the moratorium-
That's right.
Right. Where there was a language that prohibited large-scale agriculture in our shoreline district. That's a significant amount of area in our, in our, in our county. Because, well, we have 300 lakes and 1,200 miles of streams and rivers. So anything with, what, 1,000 feet of a lake body or 300 feet from a Laker stream, agriculture, large-scale agriculture. And then for those towns that are zoned, they fall under that conditional use protection. So there's this extra layer of conditions that when an applicant, a developer were to set up a large-scale operation, anything beyond 1,000 animal units, which is 2,500 stops, or was it 700?
750, roughly.
750 dairy. They would have to go through an application process and adhere to roughly 17 conditions. Do you need those read off at all? I think I can find those.
I don't know that you need to read off every condition. I just want you to explain that. What do we have in place right now for protection?
I guess since this whole experience has started, that's what we have now. That in addition to a pretty comprehensive report, CAFO report that we wrote and then was amended and provide more of a balanced perspective.
Do we have the ability as a county to say no to a CAFO from coming into Polk County? Is that, is that the county's? Do we have that ability to say no?
No, that's the county. Because there's the statewide livestock siding law. And so we're talking about two state agencies, DADCAP and DNR. And while in particular permit, it's a DNR permit that is part of that licensing program, the Wisconsin Plutent Discharge. And that's a big deal. And there's a lot of, a lot of deliverables to get that permit. And then, of course, there is ATCP 51, which is the Wisconsin State Livestock Siding Ordinance. That's administered by DADCAP. And so you're right Supervisor Olson, agriculture is regulated, and I believe it's regulated by the state. I remember earlier on in this whole experience, we had, we had the opportunity to go down several different paths. One path was to adopt a local siding ordinance. Another path was to pursue the conditional use, conditional use permit path. An alternative to that was also, which is a fairly relatively new path, which is the operational base. At the time, this is earlier on, and forgive me if I'm wrong, the Environmental Services Committee decided to choose the conditional use permit path. And that's what we've gone down. We adopted a conditional use permit process. Part of our comprehensive land use ordinance. Siding ordinance is interesting. That's another path that we could go down. And I don't know why we didn't go down that path. I think one of the reasons why is it would probably require additional staff. And what is that? If you already have DADCAP and DNR administering licenses or permits for large-scale agriculture, why have a local siding ordinance? And right now in the state, there are 12 counties that do have a siding ordinance. In fact, our neighbors to the north, Burnett County, has a siding or a licensing program. And what that is, is there's one staff person, a tag technician. And really, all he does or she does is perform permit compliance. Basically, on a annual basis, ensures that the DADCAP and the DNR permits are being complied with. And they also look at mineral storage, as well as nutrient management planning. I think that takes up the most of their work, is working with those local producers and ensuring that they complete the nutrient management plan and that they're adhering. But we talk about cost, or if you want to add another layer of oversight, that is an alternative. However, at the time, when we first started this conference, he chose the conditional use.
Hey Fran, do you have a question?
Yes, I have a question. So is there anything that we have right now that I understand, I understand that we can't, that CAFOs are prohibited in shoreline wetland. But my understanding, we don't have them in our management plan. So can CAFO still spread manure in shoreline wetland district?
It cannot. We actually have a nutrient management ordinance. In fact, land and water administers that ordinance. And so there is, there is a process for large-scale agriculture to write the nutrient management plan. We have to adhere to it, we follow up with that and ensure compliance.
We are, we have people on staff that are currently doing that.
It's county ordinance.
County ordinance, right.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Excuse me. I'm a taxpayer in the town of Farmington. And it's just not the northern counties that have- Excuse me. I'm a taxpayer in the town of Farmington, and it's just not the northern counties that have withdrawn. The town of Farmington withdrawn from the Polk County zoning, oh, when I was on the town board many years ago. And we had residents that came and requested that we withdraw from the county, and we, and it was passed on a referendum by the, by the taxpayers and residents of the town of Farmington. And we have a lot of, several large dairies in, in the town of Farmington, and including over, well over 1,000 cowherds. And they are very well satisfied that the permitting process, Mr. Jackson, and all the nutrients plans are met. And I, I think they're very well, very well satisfied, and they aren't looking for protection from, from the county. Just the opposite, really. They, they feel local control is, is very satisfactory. Thank you.
Right, Olson, we've already, we've already had you talk more than twice.
I just want to ask a question.
What?
Okay. So what percentage of the county landmass is in the shoreline ordinance where you can't build the swine CAFO?
Oh, I don't have that. We've done that before. I know, I want to be accurate. I do not know that. But if you do what I did though, if you include the shoreline area, total land area, you're taking a zone town, they have that CUP protection or whatever.
Supervisor Olson, where are you asking a question, if you know the answer?
Know the answer.
Just so everybody else knows the answer.
Mr. Chair?
I have a question on that.
It's still waiting. Hold on, we're in the middle of a discussion. So what is that number, Supervisor Olson?
Forty-eight point two percent, I believe it is, according to Jason.
If you include that, the total area of zone town, we're looking at about 82, 83% land area in Polk County. Are either shoreline area or have that additional layer of conditional use protection.
Supervisor Middleton?
So this shoreline piece, I, I was kind of interested in this, and I tried to dig in and, and understand a little of this. And when I was talking to Land and Water, the way I understood it was that shoreline, shorelands are unable to have, CAFO cannot put any buildings in a, in a shoreline area. They can't build a ferroting building. They can't have a manure pit. But they can spread in, in not, not when it's frozen ground, and they have to incorporate it. So I think that's an important thing to notice, is that they can't, we can't build a CAFO there, but we can spread and incorporate manure in our shorelands. So if you look at nutrient impacts to our lakes, or nitrogen in our lakes, or algal blooms in our lakes, et cetera, I think that's still something that we should be tracking. So I just wanted to talk, make sure that, that piece was out there. It's true, we can't put a CAFO in shorelands, but we can spread in it. And then on the DADCAP piece, can, I have this a question. Did the DADCAP ordinance that was sent to them also include the findings of fact? Because when we got the response back from them, it looked very much like they didn't have that because they said, well, you can't just put conditions in here and not have any supporting information. So, you know, Brad's right. I mean, we can't just take it at state level and say, we're going to do it more and not support the why. But we didn't send the findings of fact. Is that correct, Bob? Or Malia or-
Ben, do you want to-
I, I would say that is correct, but, but they didn't come back and say, we don't like it because there's no finding of fact. They said, if you, for findings of fact, you're going to have to use local, not national data. You'll have to derive those out of Polk County.
I have a question for you, Bob. Are you aware of, do we have hog farms in Polk County, any large? And I don't know what would be large, 10, 20, 100. Are there any hog farms in Polk County currently?
There haven't been none of any large scale. There really isn't much at all. We have seven CAFOs in Polk County, all of which are dairy except one. One is poultry or dairy turkey rather.
Sure.
Again, you know, every time that they have a permit that needs to be renewed, every time they expand, you have to go through the same process with the DADCAP and DNR.
Are you aware of any, when they're expanded, what's your role? What's our role as a county when there is a CAFO or an application? What, you have anything to do with it?
They communicate that with us, with Land and Water. We work with them with nutrient management planning.
Sure. So there's a role there for the county to play a role?
We have that, yeah.
Sure. I think we've had a lot of questions. I think, I don't know that we're going to change anyone's mind, so I'd call the question.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
Yes, I hear you, Mike.
I, I come back to this, this is not a consideration of terminating the work by the two committees, the Health and Human Services Board and the Environmental Services Committee, was not on the agenda. And it seems to me it's out of order. If we're voting on Supervisor Olson's motion, it seems to me that's out of order.
Yeah, so the question's been called Supervisor Richard. You know, this doesn't, this doesn't go after the resolution. Any supervisor would have the ability to bring another resolution to us, bring something through a committee. Supervisors can still put things on the agenda, but I think what it is, is it's sending a recommendation that we did what the resolution said. Staff has told us that they've hit a wall. And we're at a point where unless, when, you know, someone comes up with something new in the future, and I'll just share this before we vote on this. I talked to Eureka board members, one specific, and I know they're, they're feeling pretty good about their, they're working on their CUP too. But I think they feel like that is probably the stronger way to go. And I would encourage townships in our county to follow Bob's recommendation. If you want to be zoned and have some more protection, you, you, you join up with the county. And I also would suggest townships would contact Eureka because my discussions with them is, I think they have a pretty good CUP going on. And when they get theirs passed, I know they're going to be more than willing to share it with other townships. So that being said, the question's been called.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, one more.
Mr. Chair, point of order.
Yeah, what's your point of order?
Are you, are you responding to me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, I am. Supervisor Rowdy, what's your point of order?
In my discussion with the counties, or the counties association today, I read, she asked me to read 15 to her, and she said, well, no action will be taken because it's a discussion regarding allocation. So why are we voting on? What are we voting on?
We already ruled on that, Supervisor Rowdy. Supervisor Olson, would you read back your amendment for your motion? It's not an amendment, it's a motion. Sorry, Doug. I might be the one confusing you.
I make a motion, the board finds that no more county resources should be extended to further work on the operational ordinance as there is no clear practical path forward at this time.
Mr. Chair, can I ask you a clarifying question?
Sure.
So when we have other agenda, maybe this is a question for corporate counsel, when we have other agenda items, it says discussion and possible action. And this one doesn't. So we're taking action right now. So how does that fit? And maybe corporate counsel can help us with that. I know we've ruled on that, but I just don't quite understand why, why we move forward when it doesn't say and action.
Sure.
So this is not adopting a resolution or enacting formal policy. So this is not formal action. This is direction from the county board that county resources, that we've done as much as we can do in what we've been asked to do as far as the operations ordinance. So this, this isn't creating any county policy. So there's no formal action.
I object to that. I think that's so.
That's fine. Your objection's overruled, Supervisor Richard. Supervisor Duncanson, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was just wondering, Ben, what is the definition, the legal definition, in your opinion, of formal action?
Anything that is setting county policy.
So it would have to be a resolution or an ordinance, but not, but a motion.
Right, a motion to lay something on the table. It could, Supervisor Olson, Olson could have said, I want to delay any action on the operations ordinance until a date certain, and putting that date certain a year from now. I mean, motions to do things is not creating policy. Resolutions and ordinances create policy.
Okay, the question's been called, supporting the rest, the motion by Supervisor Olson. A roll call's been asked for. So an "I" would be to support staff being done working on the Supervisor Olson's amendment or motion. And a "no" would mean it just keeps going back to committee.
I don't see how to do it.
Sandra?
Aye.
Michael Pritchard?
Pritchard, is it me?
No.
Sharon Kelly?
Aye.
Tim O'Connell?
Aye.
Amy Middleton?
No.
Jay Lou?
Aye.
Fran Duncanson?
No.
Ms. Arkham?
Yes.
Don Bonapri?
Aye.
Brad Olson?
Yes.
Ron Rowdy?
Uh, no.
Steve Warren Doll?
Yes.
You have nine in favor? Nine in favor, four full.
Motion carried. Supervisor's announcements and reports from outside meetings attended. I know Supervisor Rowdy's tried for at least one meeting. Do you want to put that first, Doug?
Uh, yes, I can give a quick update. In, in Public Safety and Works, we have, we created a subcommittee dealing with ATV's and UTV's. And it's geared toward lots of different items. And we were in an organizational state and trying to find what direction we go. What we're going to work on, hopefully, we've worked with Mark from, from Forestry, because we want to open it, if there's a chance, we can open some of the county forests. Trail, but we're dealing on what can be done, what areas can be done. He has created a possible 25-mile loop that's out, is sterling by the five mile that's already there. And that, that's sort of a starting point that we're working on and talking to the committee about what, how we get that going, because that would end up being a state trail. And then it could be funded by the ATV club or council out of Polk County. So it's in this early stages, and we've got a long ways to go, but I think it's coming along real well.
All right, thank you, Doug. Any other supervisors? I'll say in that room there, Amy or Mike, do you have any updates?
No, thank you.
Sharon?
The Historical Society, Polk County Museum, they've hired the new director. She's now working full-time. They're, and all the committees have been formed to be able to get the museum ready for opening. At some point, they, they expect to be able to open, and they're working on some fundraisers. They've been applying for grants and did receive a, one grant already this year, so things are moving along well there. They seem to be real excited to have the director in place, and the MOU is all done and signed. Thank you, Willie, and Ben's. So progress.
Any other supervisors?
Oh, and you. Thank you.
I have a report from Polk County Housing, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, the Polk County Housing, we had a web meeting this morning, went very well, just as this has. And all the units are, are full, and there's a waiting list in, in all the units. The first of March, there's a change in one unit in Osceola. One resident is going into the Christian homes, and another resident is coming in the first of March. So they're having a work plan that is going very well, and they came through the weather very well. And so it's, everything's gouppant setting. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Brian?
I attended our Alamo Royal Humane Society. They are, have had kind of COVID go through their staff and their shelter. So they're getting dogs again from Texas for adoption, which is a great source of revenue for them. So I was happy to hear that.
Thank you. Still no other announcements or outside meetings attended? Do we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.